Further hearing of the Chief of Manchester City Council, James Skinner.
Yes, Mrs. City.
May I, please, your Lordships, your Ladyship? Just four catch-up issues from yesterday. First of all, you should have in front of you two additional pieces of paper. The first is the note that my Lord Brown asked for, just spelling out the submission that I made orally as to what we would say would be exceptional and non-exceptional cases. The second is the case that my Lord Hope referred to, Belchukova and Russia, which I will come to when I come to make submissions on the relevance of the private sector tenancy.
Yes, moving forward. Thank you.
That's point one. Point two is, my Lord Brown asked if there was reference to the homelessness safety net in any of the Strasbourg authorities. The passage I had in mind was in fact that of Lord Bingham in K, not in the Strasbourg. That's paragraph thirty-eight of Lord Bingham in K, and although his speech is approved in McCann, that specific paragraph is not. The third point, as I referred at the very end of yesterday afternoon to some of the cases dealing with the question of forum, I will come back to those if I may when I come to look at the statutory scheme in a moment. And then finally, there is one passage in McCann which I admitted to take the Court to yesterday, which in our submission is important, and before moving on with my submissions, I would invite the Court to turn up. That's in volume twelve, tab one hundred and eleven. And it's paragraph forty-eight, which we didn't go to yesterday, which in my submission is an important one, where the Strasbourg Court says, "The Court considers this interference was in accordance with the law and pursued the legitimate aim of protecting the rights and freedoms of others in two respects. First, it protected the local authority's right to regain possession of the property as against an individual who had no contractual or other right to be there. The domestic courts laid considerable emphasis on this aspect, which applies equally to all landlords who are trying to repossess property. However, the interference also pursued the aim of ensuring that the statutory scheme for housing provision was properly applied. The others in such a case are the intended beneficiaries of the complex arrangements set up by, amongst others, the housing acts. The Court accepts that it's only by limiting the protection of the acts to the categories to which it applies that the policy underlying the acts can sensibly be implemented." And we rely on that paragraph. First of all, it makes it even clearer than the other parts of the judgment in McCann in our submission, that the Strasbourg Court is there expressly accepting that there will be categories where security of tenure and the procedural protections that that entails will not enjoy. And the second is that the Strasbourg Court is there identifying the legitimate aims which will generally be in play when the Court is carrying out the limited proportionality exercise that we submit is envisaged at paragraphs fifty-four and fifty-five. Those legitimate aims being, on the one hand, the absolute right of the local authority landlord to their property, that being, however, an interest that would apply whoever was the landlord; but secondly, the aim of ensuring that the statutory scheme under which local authority housing is managed is properly applied. And so, in the vast majority of cases where the long-stop Article VIII proportionality review needs to be undertaken, those are the legitimate aims which it would be expected the local authority would rely upon. So with those preliminary matters out of the way, I propose to deal as quickly as I can with the third, fourth, and fifth submissions which I outlined yesterday afternoon, i.e., first what we say is the inadequacy of the respondent's approach, which brings in the position in the private sector, then some submissions on the statutory scheme, and finally, the question of the application of section six-two-B of the Human Rights Act. Dealing first with the respondent's approach, as the Court will have seen from the respondent's case, essentially, they contend very much for the status quo, and it will come as no surprise for the Court, but in the light of our analysis of the recent line of Strasbourg jurisprudence, we submit that that approach cannot stand in the light of, in particular, the proportionality review that's required in McCann, Kosic, and Paulitch, nor in our submission can gateway be, as essentially a public law gateway, be sufficient, given the nature of the exercise that's envisaged in those cases. Now, my learned friend, Mr. Arden, does have a submission that this Court is not bound to follow the line of authorities in Strasbourg. We would submit that there is a clear and consistent line of authorities, and therefore, this Court is bound to and should follow those authorities. The classic case on that obviously is Lord Bingham's speech in Ulla, which followed Lord Slin's speech in Alconbury, as requiring that the domestic courts should, in the absence of some special circumstances, follow any clear and constant jurisprudence of the Strasbourg Court. Mr. Arden relies on Horn Castle as demonstrating that one can have exceptions to that rule, bearing in mind that it's required by section two-one of the Human Rights Act. But we submit that this case is very far indeed from the Horn Castle type of case, not least because that was a case where the chamber of the Strasbourg Court had reached its decision in Al Kawaja, which was considered by a seven-member Supreme Court not to fully understand or appreciate the domestic law of hearsay in criminal proceedings, but the Grand Chamber had adjourned the UK's request for a reference pending the pronouncement of the Supreme Court in Horn Castle. And that was a very unusual case, where it could be said with some considerable justification that what was going on there was a dialogue between Strasbourg and this Court, where Strasbourg was waiting to see what the Supreme Court was going to say in the Crown against Horn Castle before deciding whether to refer the matter to the Grand Chamber, and no doubt once it reached the Grand Chamber would then have to look very, very carefully indeed at what this Court said about hearsay in criminal cases before reaching a definitive decision on the point. By contrast, in the present case, we say the dialogue really has already taken place. The dialogue began with the House of Lords' judgments in Kazi, then came Connors, in which Strasbourg considered all of the domestic cases which had been decided in the area up till the point when it came to consider it, such as Sheffield and Smart and so forth. The next part of the dialogue was the House of Lords' decision in K, in which the House of Lords split four-three, and in McCann, which came thereafter, the European Court of Human Rights considered very carefully the decisions that had gone before in the House of Lords, including Kazi and K, and having considered those, it sided with the minority in K, as we have seen. But in so far as the analogy of a dialogue may be appropriate, we submit really that conversation has come to a conclusion.
It didn't really end there, actually, did it? I mean, I'm looking at Doherty, paragraph twenty, where I was trying to carry on the conversation. It doesn't seem to have resulted in much by way of a reply, but I was making the point that McCann, by picking up the phrase about very exceptional circumstances and so on, wasn't really giving us the kind of objective standards we needed to sort the situation out. And you've been developing in your submission, in your paper today, put forward some tests that we might apply, but that doesn't come from Strasbourg.
No.
And what I was trying to do is to pry out some more.
My Lord's absolutely right. Of course, in a sense, there has been an answer to the question put by your Lordship at paragraph twenty of Doherty, although it's not expressly referred to, but what we have had since then from Strasbourg are Kosic and Paulitch.
Right. Neither of them are referred to Doherty.
Neither of them refer to Doherty.
Strasbourg hasn't yet, so to speak, taken explicit note of Doherty.
No, no more.
But you say that, basically, they have regarded the argument as closed?
Well, we would submit that they looked at the issue carefully in McCann on the basis of two House of Lords authorities which had already been promulgated, and having done so, made clear that they sided with the minority in K. And so, it can't be said that there's a sort of open question that there is in the Horn Castle case. We say there's been a relatively extensive dialogue, both between this Court and its predecessor in Strasbourg, and also, interestingly, between the minority and majority of this Court, because each of the cases so far has been a split decision, which is another distinguishing feature from Horn Castle, where a seven-strong Supreme Court unanimously, as it were, sent the question back to Strasbourg, "Are you sure about this?", because it was felt very strongly that the approach in Al Kawaja wasn't appropriate. So, we do submit that this is not one of those extremely exceptional cases, where the line of Strasbourg jurisprudence can be put to one side or simply seen as sort of opening gambits in a conversation. With that in mind, I turn to the position in relation to the private sector, because in support...
Has there ever been a, there hasn't been ever a full chamber case, but I'm not sure whether anyone's ever suggested there should be in Strasbourg?
No, there was, there hasn't been a Grand Chamber decision that I'm aware of, and I'm not aware of, and haven't been applied for.
Well, that, in a way, would not be surprising in the UK cases, given the consistency of Mr. Sale's submissions in K.
Yes.
With what subsequently transpired.
Yes. Well, that's right, and indeed, I was his junior in that case, and the line the government has taken, it has been consistent throughout, K and ultimately in Doherty after McCann came out and in this case. So in support of their argument for the domestic status quo, the respondents raised the spectre, we would submit interoram, of Article VIII proportionality revolutionising the law relating to private landlord and tenant. Now, of course, this issue doesn't fall to be determined in the present case, although it's right to say that my Lord Hope, in particular in Doherty, felt it wasn't something that could be fully left out of account in looking at the implications of any development of the law. I should tell the Court that the issue is due to come before the Chancery Division in a case called Quadrant Brownswood Cooperative Limited and White, due to be heard, I think, around at the moment November of this year, obviously at first instance. But we submit it's not an issue that falls to be determined definitively at this stage.
And sorry, what, could you say again just what the issue is that's coming before the Chancery Division?
In that, as I understand it, the issue in that case will be whether the Court hearing a possession proceedings brought by a private landlord is bound to exercise an Article VIII proportionality test in deciding whether to grant possession. Now, we submit there's an important distinction between the vertical and the horizontal in this context, and we do invite the Court to return, in that context, to De Palmer and the United Kingdom, which is, we submit, the most considered Strasbourg authority dealing with that difference. That's at volume twelve, tab one hundred and eight. We could go there, please. Now, this was a decision of the Commission, concerned an applicant who held a lease for a flat from a private landlord, following various disputes, particularly in regard to the service charges to be paid. The landlord brought a county court claim seeking forfeiture of the lease, and the applicant was eventually evicted. The Commission considered the claim primarily under Article One Protocol One, but we submit that its reasoning is nonetheless very important. If I could invite the Court to go to page one hundred and fifty-four, and there's three or four short passages I would wish to read. First, three lines down on page one-five-four, "The Commission considers that it must first examine the way in which state responsibility arises in the present case for the matters about which the applicant complains. It's clear that the state has not directly deprived the applicant of her possessions by taking them into its possession or otherwise expropriating her. The forfeiture order was made by the county court and implemented the terms of the lease regulating the private law contractual arrangements between the applicant as tenor to the land board in relation to the applicant's occupation of the flat." And then dropping to fifteen lines from the foot of the page, "In view of the exclusively private law relationship between the parties to the lease, the Commission considers that the respondent government cannot be responsible by the mere fact that the land board by its agents, who were private individuals, brought the applicant's lease to an end in accordance with the terms of the lease, which set out the agreement between the applicant and the company. The question arises whether any other aspect of the applicant complaint under Article One Protocol One would give rise to breach of the state's responsibility under the convention. It's true the landlord issued proceedings in the domestic courts in order to forfeit the applicant's lease. This fact alone is not, however, sufficient to engage state responsibility in respect of the applicant's right to property, since the public authority in the shape of the county court merely provided a forum for the determination of the civil rights in dispute, contending the state responsibility for an interference with rights protected by the convention arising in respect of this complaint. The applicant seeks to demand that a state be subject to a positive obligation to protect the property rights of an individual in the context of his dispute with another private individual." Then dropping four lines, "In the present case, the applicant and landlord had entered into contractual arrangements set out in the lease which expressly provided for the applicant's tendency to terminate if rent remained unpaid once demanded." Then dropping five or six lines, "Furthermore, in view of the value which may attach to such a lease and the civil nature of the dispute arising about its interpretation, the courts of the domestic legal system were available to protect the different interests of the parties by providing an independent and impartial tribunal which may determine any dispute fairly." And then five or six lines below that, "The fact that judgment was given against her and her lease was forfeit cannot be compared with such direct state action, since it's the function of the courts to determine disputes between parties, with the inevitable consequence that one party may ultimately be unsuccessful in the litigation in question. Would not appear the mere fact that individuals, the unsuccessful party of the private litigation concerning the tenancy agreement with a private landlord, could be sufficient to make the state responsible for an alleged violation of Article One Protocol One. Hence, the respondent government was not required under this provision to take further measures to secure the applicant's peaceful enjoyment of her possessions." It follows that in this case, the Commission finds that the outcome of proceedings did not give rise to a violation of Article One Protocol One. And then, there's brief consideration of Article Eight at point two, which is along the same lines. "The applicant also invokes Article Eight. He contends that her eviction from her home constitutes an unjustified interference with the right to respect for her home. However, the Commission notes it's already found Article One Protocol One does not require the state to take further measures to prevent an interference with the applicant's rights. The substance of the applicant's complaint under Article Eight is the same, but the Commission finds that any interference with the applicant's right to respect for a home which the forfeiture of lease engendered was inconformity with Article Eight Two as a measure which was in accordance with the law and necessary in the democratic society for the protection of the rights of others. This aspect of her complaint is therefore manifestly ill-founded." And so, it's quite clear that the Commission there considered judgment between private parties in this way can't be compared with direct action being taken against an individual by a public authority landlord, and we make three submissions on the basis of that case. The first is this, "We would submit no action by a private party to enforce his private rights can involve an interference by a public authority with the other party's Article Eight rights."
Could you state it again?
Yes. "No action by a private party to enforce his private rights can involve an interference by a public authority with another party's Article Eight rights. In so far as the county court is merely providing an independent forum for the determination of the party's respective private law rights, it shouldn't be treated as interfering with either of those parties' rights at all, and we say that's what flows from De Palmer." And the point may be illustrated, my submission, with this example. Take an action in the High Court for breach of contract. The defendant says to the judge, "I have no defence to this breach of contract claim, but if you find against me, I will lose my house. And therefore, I'd ask you not to find against me, because it will be a disproportionate interference with my Article Eight rights." In our submission, it's inconceivable that in those circumstances, the High Court judge would need to decide whether to find in favour of the claimant who has a cast-iron case in a breach of contract action because of what the defendant says are serious consequences for his respect for the home resulting thereof. It's just not...
A tragedy would be when the charging order is sought.
Yes. Well, that may be another, yes, whereas it were the judgment bites. But in my submission, that's simply not what is contemplated by Article Eight at all, and really, there's very little...
Are you saying, sorry to interrupt you, are you saying that Article Eight is not engaged at all? Or to put the question another way, would the judge have to accept that Article Eight was in play? Because later authority does suggest that the Court looks at it very broadly and will say yes to that.
I'll come to those authorities in a moment, but just, I suppose that the highest we put the case, and we do say this is what De Palmer says, is that Article Eight simply isn't in the midst when the Court is deciding between the rights of two private parties, and that's what we say De Palmer says.
And the midst means engaged, though.
Engaged. However, we do make a secondary submission, if we're wrong about that, which is that even if Article Eight would be in play, the Article Eight Two requirement of necessity would have a very different content in the private sector context to the public sector context.
That seems to be the effect of the sentence, the bottom of one-five-five going into one-five-six.
Yes, that's how it seems to be put there, in contrast to the way it's put bottom of one-five-four to top of one-five-five, which seems to be the harder-edged submission. And really, that in the context of deciding between two individuals' private rights, the question of necessity answers itself, because legal certainty and the rule of law require that the Court applies the law justly between the parties. A third submission...
Sorry, De Palmer, of course, was a fairly old case, and it seems, looking again at the passage that Lord Newvega has just drawn attention to, it was before what was necessary in a democratic society was regarded as inevitably bringing in questions of proportionality. There's no reference to proportionality there.
Well, there isn't any reference to proportionality, although the terms tend to be used interchangeably by the Strasbourg Court.
Yes, well, I mean, I find it's probably twenty years or ten years too late, but I find it very puzzling, this notion that what is necessary in a democratic society above all is proportionality. Arguably, what is necessary in a democratic society is clear laws that apply to everyone.
Yes.
And the notion of having to decide on every single case, is it right to apply this law to this citizen, doesn't seem to me particularly democratic, but it's a lot of water, I'm afraid, has gone under the Strasbourg Bridge since then.
Yes, my Lord, although we would say, certainly in this context, the very argument that your Lordship has articulated would be the universal answer to the Article Eight Two question if it arises, as between two private parties. And we make the third submission as well, which is this, that any failure by the Court to decide the case in accordance with the law would be likely to involve a breach of the Article One Protocol One rights of the landlord. That being the case, in our submission, as it were...
Well, hang on a second.
Yes, my...
The county court doesn't merely determine rights, it makes a possession order.
Yes.
And a county court, in some circumstances, can defer making a possession order. Now, why isn't that interference with the Article One, first Protocol One rights?
Well, it may be, and then the question is whether it will be justified. If the county court has been given the power by Parliament to defer possession, then it's highly likely, given the margin of appreciation accorded to Parliament in housing and social policy, that the Strasbourg Court would find that such an interference with the Article One Protocol One rights of the landlord would be justified, but that is an issue which may arise. All I'm...
Justified on what basis?
On the basis that for reasons of social policy, it was felt that, to some extent, the otherwise untrammeled private rights of landlords ought to be cut down.
But this shows that the county court is doing more than merely providing a forum for determination of civil rights. It's making an order that somebody will be dispossessed of their home.
It is, it is, but in the private law context, what crucially is missing is the aspect of any public authority bringing that state of affairs about, and of course, a public authority doesn't have any Article One Protocol One rights.
Yes, isn't that an important point?
Yes.
That the rights and freedoms of others, which are referred to in Article Eight Two, are the rights and freedoms of private persons, not of public authorities.
Well, certainly, a public authority doesn't have any enforceable article rights under the convention. I'm not sure I'd go so far as to say that its more general rights can be left out of account.
Well, that's why I'm putting it to you, because I think that's quite an interesting point.
Well, I thought that it was this paragraph forty-eight of McCann you started with today that showed us the relevance of others under Eight Two in a public authority context. They and the whole concept of insecure, non-sequal occupation is designed, Strasbourg there except, to recognise that actually there are others who have an interest in being able to get into property, which is the landlord, the public authority landlord entitled to recover.
Yes, that's so, although in fact, in the third line of paragraph forty-eight of McCann, there is also reference to the local authority's right to regain possession. So, I'm not sure, with respect, I'd go so far as to say that the local authority's property rights should be left out of account in the Article Eight Two balancing exercise. What is clear is that the local authority can't invoke its own convention rights in the way that a private landlord could. So that, we submit, is the analysis. Obviously, my learned friend, Mr. Arden, cites the Hentner as demonstrating that things have moved on from De Palmer. We would submit that that's an unusual case and one which shouldn't be extrapolated too readily. That case is at volume thirteen, tab one hundred and twenty-two.
So just before you move that, I mean, my Lord in the chair asked about the Court powers in respect of delaying the rights of a private landlord to recover possession. I mean, they're not at large, are they?
No.
And I thought that they were highly restricted.
They are highly restricted, my Lord, and generally, in most private landlord cases, very, very limited indeed.
I think six weeks is the maximum period, isn't it?
That's section eighty-nine, yes, my Lord. So they're very, very restricted in the part...
And that case is of great hardship, wasn't it? I think we touched on it in K.
Yes, so they're very, very restricted in most cases. Yes, so they're very, very restricted in most cases, which in my submission reflects the choices of Parliament, that really when one is dealing with private individuals, to a greater extent, as it were, sanctity of contract and the basic bargaining between two individuals applies as it normally would. In the public sector sphere, there's a much heavier overlay of conditions and qualifications, as one would expect.
Can I just ask, in relation to your private landlord scheme, essentially, you put forward reasons why the court couldn't and shouldn't play a role other than its usual role of adjudicating upon the position as it appears without reference to the Human Rights Act. But does that avoid the problem that in Strasbourg, we may be criticised on the basis that the law, whether it's the common law or the statutory law probably, should allow a more intrusive role on the part of the court? And if that criticism is raised, wouldn't it be one that could be raised with the court in many cases, even if only by way of an argument that if the court was precluded from investigating the proportionality of the eviction in the particular case, then that itself was incompatible with Strasbourg law?
Well, my submission on that would be that whilst it would be perfectly open to an occupier to apply to Strasbourg on the basis that the common or statutory law relating to private tenancies was incompatible with Article Eight, that would be an argument that would almost certainly fail, given the very wide margin of appreciation that's given to governments, see paragraph sixty-eight of Bletchich in particular, and that the legitimate aims of the private rights of parties being balanced and adjudicated upon would almost inevitably succeed.
The problem, of course, is going to be in the exceptional cases. These are the ones that always attract attention in Strasbourg. The run-of-the-mill, no doubt you're right, and indeed, one sees that in the public sphere too. It's where you get these sort of hard-luck cases, people who are seriously incapacitated and would be gravely disadvantaged by being moved out quickly, who bring these cases. And it's nibbling away at the edge, that's the problem, I think.
Well, I see that, my lord, but it would submit that really, one is in a very different sphere indeed, when the court is simply adjudicating between two private parties as to their private law rights, and that it would be a very strong step for Strasbourg to take, and in my submission, it hasn't taken, it's certainly with argument on the point, to say that even in those circumstances, the individual private law rights could be overridden in that way. And when one comes to Zahentna, one sees that in both that case and indeed in Belchikova, the issue wasn't argued at all. Zahentna itself was a stark and unusual case, where there'd been a judicial sale of the applicant's flat while she was mentally incapable. You see that from paragraph six.
Surely, the point of distinction in Zahentna is that there was no contractual relationship to possession in that case between the two parties. There was only a right to possession and selling the property because the court chose to give a charging order.
Yes, well, there was.
That's the difference between the normal landlord and tenant mortgage or mortgagee case, where it arises from the personal contract, a private contract.
Yes, it was a subject of a judicial sale, the flat in that case.
But the charging order was itself imposed by the court.
Yes.
The right to sell, the right to possession arose out of a court order. It didn't arise out of any sort of contractual arrangement between the parties, as I understand it.
Yes, although that in itself flowed from the fact that a private party was owed money.
Yes, but there wasn't a contractual right to possession, ever. Whereas all landlord and tenant cases, mortgage or mortgagee cases, so on, there's a contractual right to possession that's being enforced. Whereas here, the right to possession arises from a court order.
Well, we would rely.
The charging order.
On the further distinguishing factor, that if one looks at paragraph twenty-one of the judgment, the case was put on the basis of discrimination and positive obligation. The applicant represented by Hagardin requested the Vienna Regional Civil Court allow an ordinary appeal from the Supreme Court. She argued that the Enforcement Act setting an absolute time limit for filing of an appeal against the decision of sale in judicial auction was unconstitutional and amounted to discrimination against disabled persons not capable of participating in legal proceedings. And then one sees at paragraph twenty-four, on the thirty-first January Supreme Court rejected the applicant's extraordinary appeal, it noted that the regional court's decision was in line with the constant case law, as the question regarding the constitutionality of the absolute time limit for the filing of the appeals, referred to the necessary protection of the purchaser. One notes at paragraphs forty-eight to forty-nine that the government didn't in any way seek to rely on the private rights of the party that got the charging order. One sees the government argued that it was not sufficiently clear whether the apartment had been subject to judicial sale had actually been the applicant's home within the meaning of Article Eight. And then at forty-nine, furthermore, the government asserted that the mere fact that a judicial sale did not directly affect the applicant's right to respect for the home. Judicial sale brought about a change of ownership but not a change in her living situation at that point. What wasn't argued at all was that the private nature of the other party to the proceedings was relevant, nor was De Palma referred to.
Isn't it really a case about the conformity of the Enforcement Act with the Convention? Because many countries, particularly in America, don't allow houses to be taken in execution of judgment debts. And so what they're saying, I think, in fifty-nine to sixty-one, is that there is a question about whether the Enforcement Act itself is in conformity with Article Eight.
Well, particularly against the background of the lack of capacity. That was the key fact in the case, one sees at the bottom of sixty-one. While the court does not have to examine the system in the abstract, it notes the circumstance of the present case, it was particularly detrimental to the applicant. Here's the expert opinion provided in the guardianship proceedings, was that she lacked legal capacity for years, as a result she'd not been in a position to enter an objection. And then at sixty-three, we say this is important, four lines down, nevertheless, persons who lack legal capacity are particularly vulnerable and states may thus have a positive obligation under Article Eight to provide them with specific protection by the law. And so those are the unusual features, in addition to the ones identified by my lord Lord Collins, my lord Lord Newburger, which indicate this was an unusual case, which shouldn't be extrapolated generally, particularly in circumstances where the point about the private parties wasn't taken.
Is it worth, though, going back to fifty-five?
Yes.
Because it's really picking up Lord Collins's point, but putting it in a particular focus, because of course, the reference is made to the relevant provisions of the Enforcement Act. But then you see what the court says about the legitimate aim, that is protecting the rights and freedom of others, and you get other people's rights coming in, that's the interests of creditors and so on. And in addition, eviction and refusal to annul the judicial sale serve to protect the purchaser of the apartment. So other people's rights are in play there, and you might find the court saying a similar thing in a private contractual arrangement, that the interference was in accordance with the law, it was there to protect the rights of the party to the contract who was seeking to enforce what the law provided. So the same kind of, as it were, bringing into the equation of private rights on one side and the interests of the person who's being dispossessed on the other are in play here, although the context, no doubt, is different.
Well, they are, but our submission is that that arises in the unusual circumstances of the applicant being mentally incapacitated, a positive obligation being owed to her, charging order having been made by the court, and there being a question as to the constitutionality of the provision. And so we would submit that Zahentna certainly can't be seen as sweeping away any distinctions such as that drawn in De Palma between a public authority seeking possession and a private individual doing so.
Was De Palma referred to?
No, my lord, and nor is it referred to in the final case on this, which is the Belchikova case, which my lord, Lord Hope referred to yesterday. This was, of course, only an admissibility decision. The facts fairly straightforward, three paragraphs down, the applicant's sister passed away, according to her will, the sister bequeathed her apartment to the applicant. Appears at the time the applicant resided in the apartment on the basis of rent agreement. Thereafter, the applicant was involved in court proceedings against other members of her family and the validity of the will and rights to the apartment. There was a judgment on that question, which included two lay assessors, and it went against the applicant. And the complaint that was made, one sees on the second page, was essentially an Article Six complaint, under the heading Complaints. In respect of the proceedings concerning the validity of her sister's will, the applicant complained that lay assessors K and T were not competent to take part in the court composition. The domestic courts erred in assessing the evidence of her case, that more generally the outcome of these proceedings was wrong. The applicant relied on Article Six of the Convention in this connection. Under Article Six, eight and thirteen of the Convention, the applicant complained about the outcome of the eviction proceedings against her. And over the page, at page three, we see beneath the quotation at the top, the government submitted that the case raised no issues under the Convention, as the lay assessor in question had been duly competent to examine the applicant's civil case. And that's the only record we have of what the government submitted. In the last large paragraph on the page, there's reference to the Article Eight complaint. The court observed loss of oncoming, most extreme interference, any person at risk is in principle able to have the proportionality determined. And there's then reference to McCann College below that, but of course, no reference at all is made to the fact that those were cases where it was the public authority. Then, on the facts, the court notes that in taking the decision to evict the applicant from the contested apartment, domestic court specifically weighed the conflicting interests and so forth, and they go on to find that it was manifestly ill-founded. Now, what we say about Belchikova, four things. First, we point out it's merely an admissibility decision, and there's no guarantee at all that after full argument before court would have approached it in the rather limited way that it was approached here. The second point is it was a case brought primarily under Article Six. The third point is, so far as one can tell, the government didn't take any point at all about the claim being between private parties. And there's no reasoning at all in the limited admissibility judgment as to why the principle in relation to public authorities should be read across to private parties. Fourthly, there's no mention whatsoever of De Palma. And there is a further point, that in any event, on its facts, the Article Eight challenge was ruled inadmissible.
Well, it doesn't help, because I mean, on the face of it, it rather looks as if it presupposes that the proportionality is a touchstone that will apply equally in a private claim context.
Equally, we would submit, on the face of it, it would seem clear that the issue wasn't considered at all. It just went by assumption.
I mean, is it possible, I don't know, that some countries, maybe Russia for all one knows, that under their legislative scheme for private landlords, there may be barriers to repossession that the court is required to consider. I mean, it may have to be reasonable to make an order, may it not? I just don't know. But I mean, if it were, in a sense, then one can see, can one not?
Well, we would submit not, because even if there are limited procedural barriers to possession, our submission you have, which is that either, when you're simply adjudicating between two private parties, or simply not in Article Eight territory at all, or the Article Eight question under Article Eight Two is inevitably answered by the respective rights of the parties under the domestic law, or it's a third alternative that one's simply got to accept that the legislature has balanced the Article Eight and Article Protocol One rights of the respective parties. Our submission is that this is not a considered decision on this issue, on any view, and that should the matter come to Strasbourg, certainly if the UK government were involved, then De Palma would have to be looked at. The distinctions between the private and the public sector would need to be carefully looked at. And our submission is that it would be very surprising if Strasbourg regarded the private context as identical to the public context. So those are the fourth part of my submission.
Just one point on that, I was looking at your argument in K.
Yes.
Tab forty-five, page four-eight-one, F to G.
Yes.
Okay. There it goes.
Terminal five, tab forty-four, page four-eight-one, F to G.
Yes.
I just noticed you say that your argument is the exceptionality, one only in the exceptional cases will trespass as Article Eight rights outweigh public authority's property rights, and then you say the same approach will apply where the legal framework is contractual and unregulated by statute, or where the landlords are private not public, and issues as to Article One may be relevant. And you refer to Wood, Chapman, we've got Wood and Chapman, and just having looked at Wood, it appears to be in really the same vein as Belchikova, and the Commission said, insofar as the repossession constitutes an interference with the home, the Commission finds this was in accordance with the terms of the loan and domestic law and was necessary for the protection of the rights and freedoms of others, namely the lender. So, i.e., they were applying Article Eight, an Article Eight test.
The governments had cause to reconsider this point, in particular, in the context of the case that I mentioned earlier, the, one moment, the Quadrant Brownswood and White case, which is currently going through the courts, the way I put it to the court today is the approach which the government has taken in that case, which I accept is not the same as the submission that was made there in K, but we submit on analysis is the correct one, and that certainly one can't simply read directly across, even if Article Eight is in play, one can't simply read directly across the approach in the public sector to that in the private sector.
Well, I think no one would suggest that they were, on the facts, subject precisely the same considerations. There are points, I suppose, one can make going both ways, namely that housing authorities have a different sort of duty to private landlords and vice versa.
But also, we do say there is an important distinction between horizontal and direct effect.
Yes, yes.
Turning then to the fourth head of my.
Just before we leave K, I mean, I think it was argued on the basis that it would affect private landlords equally with public landlords, and indeed, I think I say as much at paragraph two-hundred-and-four, but I mean, I made a recollect of saying, I don't doubt others said it too, and indeed. I made a recollection saying, I don't doubt others said it too, and indeed, actually Lord Bingham, I think. Paragraph thirty-seven refers to McFail, saying that that might have to be relaxed, but McFail was a private landlord of squatters.
Yes, well, there was there was some argument on it, not not, I would. From recollection, as detailed or considered as as so far in 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 this case. But we 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 put forward the analysis that I've that I've outlined and do submit that that. Those ought to be the considerations that should should be taken into account.
Have have in any of these cases, perhaps there haven't been. That many, but have other European governments intervened, and in other words, is there any appreciation of how these problems are being. Assessed elsewhere in Europe?
I'm not I'm not aware of any government interventions in any of these cases from other governments.
I mean, they obviously are involved, as one sees some of the cases, and. It's funny that we wrestle with these very difficult issues in complete isolation and see them go up to Strasbourg.
Turning then to the statutory scheme. That's been, you've been taken through that thoroughly by by Mr. Dravel. Just one general point I would make at first is that the demoted tenancy scheme. Is derived from the introductory tenancy scheme. The introductory tenancy scheme, as you may well be familiar with, applies to all new tenants. Local authorities, where the local authority has chosen to opt in to the scheme. And what it means is that the introductory tenant for the first year, subject to various exceptions. Essentially has the same very limited rights that the demoted tenant has. Once the tenancy has been demoted, and it was. Essentially the success of the introductory tenancy scheme in filtering out antisocial tenants. At an early stage, before they acquired rights of security of tenure. That brought about the demoted tenancy scheme, which essentially provides a forum for. The secure tenant to be put back in the position as if they had been an introductory tenant. The statutory schemes are very similar indeed, and you may have seen there's an appendix. To the decision, I think, in Gilboy, where a table of the comparative. Provisions which myself and Mr. Luba put together is is set out, showing just how similar they are. For ease of reference, at bundle two, tab ten, you will see that sections one, two, four, one, two, seven and one, two, eight. Of the nineteen ninety-six Housing Act mirror very closely sections one, four, three, A and following. Of the same act in relation to demoted tenancies. And so the.
The annex at page seventy-one of Gilboy.
The, yes, I do, I believe it is, if I could just turn that up, it's Gilboy's is bundle eight.
Eight seventy-four.
Yes, tab seventy-four, and the annex is at page seventy-one through to page seventy-four. And you'll see both the primary provisions of the legislation and the review procedures are near identical. And I mentioned that because that means that what is argued here in relation to the motive tenancies. Really must apply equally to the much more widespread introductory tenancies, because they are. As it were, two incarnations of the same basic scheme. Now, the policy behind the provisions for demoted tenancies is set out in the witness statement of Peter Theng. Which is in the core volume in the appendix, if I could invite the court to go to page three, two, three.
Three, one.
Uh, sorry, three, two, three, my lord. And just a few short extracts, paragraph thirty, antisocial behaviour includes a wide range of problematic behaviour. Broadly defined as behaviour that's capable of causing nuisance or annoyance or offence to an individual or in the wider community, this type of behaviour. Can include nuisance to neighbours, vandalism, graffiti, bedding, antisocial drinking, intimidating behaviour, and harassment which targets members. Then five groups because of their perceived differences, such behaviour even from a few individuals can negatively affect reputations of whole neighbourhoods. Landlords can spend a disproportionate amount of their time dealing with such housing management issues. Landlords have difficulty letting their stock and homeowners often cannot sell their homes. Capital value is lost, only residents who cannot move elsewhere will stay and consequently whole areas are blighted. The concept of demotion was introduced in the consultation paper tackling antisocial tenants. As part of a broader package of options to ensure social landlords had the means to deal swiftly and effectively with minority tenants who cause nuisance to the wider community. The consultation paper outlined that under introductory tenancy schemes where tenants have acted antisocially during the first year of a tenancy. It's proved easier to evict them, such that it also provided a useful platform for communicating to tenants the fact. Landlord expects as a condition of their tenancy agreement, they'll conduct themselves appropriately in a manner which respects the neighbours and the wider community. And then at page three, two, four, at paragraph thirty-eight. There were considered to be three primary benefits of a demoted tenancy. It provides landlords with greater flexibility that would be available to them under the secure or assured tenancy regimes to take appropriate action speedily and effectively. Should tenants under a demotion order continue to misbehave. Secondly, it provides a clear warning to the tenant while also providing a window of opportunity in which to work with the tenant to try and save the tenancy where possible. It also provides a further incentive to address their behaviour by suspending some of the rights that they would have enjoyed under a secure tenancy whilst on probation. Tenants do not benefit from the right to buy and the right to acquire their homes in such periods should not count towards any subsequent right to buy qualification or discount period. And finally, at paragraph three, two, six, paragraph forty-four. It was considered that landlords were best placed to take such decisions that control over the motion process should be given to landlords with the expertise and local knowledge to deal with the problems most effectively. The majority of local authorities have specialist antisocial behaviour units which are comprised of staff with experience in dealing with both antisocial behaviour and housing management. For local authorities without a specialist list, housing officers with similar levels of expertise and specialist knowledge will oversee the motion process. Such officers will have specific knowledge of the local environment, this knowledge should give them a particularly intimate knowledge of the case and its context. The useful overview enabling them to take into account a wide range of considerations. Such as whether or not attempts to continue to treat the underlying cause of the antisocial behaviour are likely to be successful. Bearing in mind, for example, the availability of specialist support services and past attempts to deal with the problem. The effect of antisocial behaviour on existing tenants or the local community as a whole and on prospective tenants and in the light of past attempts to tackle the problem. Whether it's appropriate to continue to apply public resources in an attempt to deal with the problem. And so one sees that the demoted tenancy scheme was put in place to address. What was perceived as a very real social problem in the light of the perceived success of the very similar introductory tenancy scheme. While we're in this document, and to save us going back to it, there is appended to the witness statement. A fact sheet on antisocial behaviour and demotion orders which starts at page three hundred and thirty. This fact sheet was, the following paragraph, paragraph sixty-seven was referred to, I think, by Lord Justice Waller. In Gilboy at page three, four, two. Paragraph sixty-seven, the landlord's neighbour side to move to possess a property is outlined earlier, it's important to note, the landlord's reasons for. Moving to possession are not restricted to further occurrences of antisocial behaviour or other illegal activity. Key aim of the demotion is to give discretion to the landlord and may include other matters relating to the conduct of the tenancy such as rent arrears.
Where did you find that, I'm sorry, Mr.
So paragraph sixty-seven at page three, four, two. Goes on, by the time they get to being evicted from a demoted tenancy, the tenant has had their day in court. And they're on their last chance, and we'll come back to that when looking at the reasons which may be relied on for terminating a demoted tenancy. With that in mind, three issues in relation to the statutory scheme in particular arise. The first is one we touched on yesterday afternoon, which is where should a challenge. To the termination of the motion order take place in the county court or the admin court? The second relates to what reasons may be relied upon for terminating a demoted tenancy. Or what reasons may be relied upon for terminating a demoted tenancy? And thirdly, there's the question of whether events subsequent to the notice of proceedings may be taken into account on a review. And I'll deal with those as shortly as I can. On the question of forum which we touched on yesterday. Really, two questions may arise. The first is, if the occupant wishes to mount a conventional judicial review challenge. To the decision to seek possession, where should that be heard, in the county court or in the administrative court? And then there's the second question which arises on our analysis, if that's acceptable to the court, which is. Where should any long-stop proportionality review be determined? And part of our submission is that it would be convenient and appropriate for those two matters to be determined in the same place. Now, I won't take the court to all the authorities on this, but just give you the references for where this, these questions have been dealt with. In Manchester City Council and Cochrane, bundle five, tab forty-nine. This was a pre-Human Rights Act introductory tenancy case. And Sir John Knox at eight, one, eight, eight to eight, one, nine, F. Analyze the question and determine that any public law challenge under Wandsworth and Winder. To the decision to terminate an introductory tenancy would have to be brought before the administrative court because. The county court's jurisdiction is limited by the terms of the statute. We then have a post-HRA introductory tenancy scheme in McClellan. Bundle eight, tab seventy-seven. And I would briefly like to go to that because there, Lord Justice Waller does consider. The section seven issue that arises, so that's volume eight, tab seventy-seven. At paragraph. Fifty-seven. Lord Justice Waller outlines the argument for the tenant in that case. As to Mr. Watkinson's suggestions, the position seems to me to be as follows, the wording of section one, two, seven is clear, and indeed, it's not suggested by him or indeed by any council. That by virtue of section three of the HRA, words could be read into that section so as to reverse their effect and reverse Cochrane's case. He submitted that if there's been an infringement of the convention right, the tenant must be entitled to raise it in the possession proceedings, section seven, one of the Human Rights Act. Follows, the judge must be bound to consider it, the judge finds the breach established, must be bound to give effect to that decision. The court itself being a public authority, the court should in no circumstances adjourn the proceedings, generally so that the tenant's rights are not infringed. Its alternatives are fallback positions, one of which would allow suspension under section eighty-nine of the Housing Act nineteen eighty. And Lord Justice Waller answers that argument at paragraph fifty-nine, where he says. The tenant must have the right to rely on his or her convention rights in any proceeding, see section seven, one, B of the Human Rights Act. That does not mean any more than it says. And because the point can be raised, it does not follow that the court is bound to do any more than Cochrane's case envisaged, I E. Consider the arguability of the point and then adjourn to allow the point to be properly considered if the point is arguable. The court in making the order it considers appropriate, see section eight, one of the nineteen ninety-eight Act. Section one, two, seven does not prevent the tenant relying on a convention right if the procedure in Cochrane's case is followed. So that's how Lord Justice Waller dealt with it post-Human Rights Act. We then have the case of Gilboy, which for your note is at volume eight, tab seventy-four. Where Lord Justice Waller, again in the Court of Appeal, dealing with this time with the motor tenancy regime. Held that in this respect, the approach under the introductory tenancy scheme and the demoted tenancy schemes were indistinguishable. See paragraph twenty-four. We then have this case in the Court of Appeal, which is in the appendix, where Lord Justice Stanley Burnton. Reached the same conclusion at paragraphs forty-eight to fifty-one.
Sorry, forty-eight.
Forty-eight to fifty-one, my lord, for your reference, page thirty-six of the appendix. And then finally, we have the case to which my lady, Lady Hale, referred to yesterday, Salford City Council and Mullin. In the Court of Appeal, volume nine, tab eighty-five, Lord Justice Waller, again, at paragraphs fifty-one to fifty-three. All of those cases have consistently followed the Cochrane approach, which is that, starting with the judicial review. That can only be held in the admin court because of the exclusional limitation of the county court's jurisdiction. Whilst there is a separate argument under section seven, one, B in relation to an Article Eight proportionality challenge. So far, the Court of Appeal has held that should go down the same route. And we would submit that at the very least, that has the practical advantage that if a tenant is, as will often be the case. Both saying that the approach is irrational or otherwise unlawful in public law and saying that it's disproportionate. Those questions will fall to be considered in the same, in the same forum.
So the county court does what, it stays the proceedings so that they can go to the administrative court?
As as Sir John Knox indicated, it adjourns the proceedings pending the application to the administrative court.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I mean, why didn't Winder authorize a perfectly conventional judicial review challenge to a decision to seek possession to be undertaken in the possession proceedings in the county court?
Because of the terms of section one hundred and forty-three D of the nineteen ninety-six Act. Which specifically limits very narrowly the county court's jurisdiction, in fact, one can see that. Is explained very clearly in Cochrane, perhaps we should go briefly to it, it's at bundle five, tab forty-nine. Now here, Sir John Knox is dealing with the introductory tenancy scheme, but the provisions are materially the same. And one sees this at the foot of page eight, one, eight, just below letter H.
Sorry, eight, one.
Eight, one, H, just below letter H. In my view, Parliament by enacting section one, two, seven, two in mandatory terms. The court shall make such an order unless the provisions of section one, two, eight apply. Has clearly imposed a statutory limitation on the right of an introductory tenant to retain possession. Indeed, there's a remarkable constriction on the court's powers. In that on the one hand, under section one, two, eight, one, the court is prohibited from even entertaining possession proceedings unless the various requirements. Regarding the notice of proceedings of possession contained in section one, two, eight is satisfied. Showing that it has no jurisdiction to hear a possession action at all unless they are best satisfied. While on the other hand, if the requirements of section one, two, eight are satisfied, so the court does have jurisdiction to entertain the possession proceedings. The court is positively required to make a possession order under section one, two, seven, two. If one were to treat the provisions of section one, two, eight as a form of scilla and those of sections one, two, seven, two as coribdis. The channel in between available for navigation is remarkably narrow. But I see no escape from that analysis, even though it does reduce the functions of the court to that of ascertaining that it does have jurisdiction to entertain the proceedings at all. Once it has done so, it is required to make a possession order, that in my view necessarily involves it has no discretion in the matter at all. And in our submission, Sir John Knox is there correctly understanding what Parliament was doing. When enacting these schemes, it's saying really, once you're dealing with an introductory tenant or a demoted tenant. Basically, it's for the local authority to decide whether they stay or go. Subject to a very narrow formal check on purely procedural matters by the county court.
And yet the county court's perfectly well able to say, well, blow. And yet the county court's perfectly well able to say, "Well, blow that, I'll adjourn for another challenge, we've brought in the administrative court."
That's what Sir John Knox says.
I know, but I mean, I'm just seeing why. I mean, can we just look again? I know that's introductory and ours is demoted, but it makes no difference. So if we go back to our own legislation, volume two, one four three D two. I mean, I mean, the contrary argument, as I understand it, is simply that the county court is bound to ensure that this procedure under the other section, the E and A F, has been lawfully carried through.
That wasn't an argument considered or advanced, was it, for Sir John Knox and the Court of Appeal in Cochrane? Indeed. It doesn't seem as if it was, because he says what Mr Bachley says for the defendants.
Well, I, 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 I can't go beyond what was said there. Certainly, it's an argument that was considered in McClellan. And the consistent view of the Court of Appeal has been that there's no lack of clarity in what Parliament was seeking to do with section one four three D two.
Sorry, just looking at Manchester again, the very short judgment of Lord Justice Judge at page eight hundred and twenty-one is quite interesting.
Yes, well, he, it is one of them, and he finds it curious that, on the one hand, the county court is given effectively an express judicial review type jurisdiction in the homelessness context, while having it expressly taken away on their findings in the present context.
Could I just raise one question about this? Section one four three D.
Yes.
Subsection two.
Yes.
Merely says, "The court." That doesn't limit its instruction to the county court, and it's quite clear that possession proceedings could be taken in the High Court. Section one four three N says that a county court has jurisdiction to determine questions arising under this chapter. And section one four three N four says, "If a person takes proceedings in the High Court, which by virtue of this section he could have taken in the county court, he doesn't get any costs." So section one four three D two.
Yes.
Applies equally to the High Court and the county court. It's not a limitation on the jurisdiction of the county court. It's a limitation on the jurisdiction of the court hearing the possession action.
Yes, but in my submission, that different considerations apply because the county court is a creature of statute. It's a very strong thing to oust the supervisory jurisdiction of the High Court, which is what the consequence of my lady's argument, it seems to be.
I have no argument at all. I was merely drawing this state of affairs to your attention.
I, I see that.
And suggesting, therefore, that the purpose of the administrative court proceedings are in fact to challenge the decisions of the local authority, not to enlarge the jurisdiction of the court in the possession proceedings, which is consistent with Mr Drabell's argument.
And I'd entirely accept that.
Yes.
So, in any event, those are the...
I'm sorry, I'm lost. I mean, so you're saying that it's perfectly obvious that Parliament envisaged and intended in enacting one four three D two, that in a perfectly ordinary county court possession claim for, under a demoted tenancy, Parliament was intending that the county court should solemnly say, "Well, I think one three, one four three E and F looks to have been okay, but I'm going to adjourn this now to the administrative court for them to deal with it." And Parliament positively envisaged that.
Well, I suspect that it would not have been thought through quite expressly in that way, but of course, your lordship will be familiar with the cases such as Boddington and so forth, which deal with the circumstances in which a statutory scheme will be taken to have excluded the supervisory jurisdiction of the High Court. And in my submission, the principle that applies is that unless it can be said that it's absolutely clear that not only is the county court's jurisdiction or the possession order hearing court's jurisdiction limited in that way, but furthermore, the supervisory jurisdiction of the High Court is being wholly ousted, it simply arises from the narrow construction of section one four three D two.
But this is, I may have misunderstood something, but it's nothing to do with the High Court's jurisdiction being ousted. All that's being said is that if possession proceedings are being brought, then if Mr Drabell's construction is right, the county court can look at the lawfulness of the process. That doesn't mean to say that the High Court has no jurisdiction. It may well be that the High Court will say, "As a matter of discretion, no, no, you have it determined in the county court." But it's not outing, as I see it, the High Court's jurisdiction.
Well, there it is. Ultimately, our submission is that the approach of the Court of Appeal so far has been the optimal one. It ultimately may be a practical question, because the issue in substance will be the same. Our concern would be that if one allowed either the traditional judicial review challenge or the proportionality challenge to be heard in the county court, one would be subverting the intention of Parliament as set out in section one four three D two in a way that one would not be if those matters were exceptionally heard during an adjournment in the administrative court.
My Lord, Lord Brown would say that depends upon what the intention of Parliament was. One might very readily deduce the intention of Parliament was that there shouldn't be any more shilly-shallying at all. That is what Parliament was trying to achieve. It wasn't concerned with which jurors, which particular court was, the shilly-shallying was going to go on in.
No. Well, so far, we would, we would, we would say the Court of Appeal has been right to accept that if one can describe judicial review as shilly-shallying to that extent, and in that very limited, to that very limited extent, there is a narrow additional jurisdiction available, and we would submit, in the light of the recent line of Strasbourg authority, a further narrow jurisdiction arising under article eight. But in any event, those are our submissions on...
But I mean, the Secretary of State wants this to be dealt with, does he? Quite separately from the possession proceeding, quite separately from the court that actually knows about what's going on on the ground in the administrative court. He wants everybody to come to London and have their go there, does he? That's what your, that's what your client has instructed you to do, to try and ensure that we keep this all as a...
Well, in Manchester, they can go to Manchester.
Yes, my lady's right, of course, that now the administrative court does this number of sentences.
But he wants, he wanted two different tribunals to deal with this, two different judges, and with the delay inevitably involved and all the rest of it.
They'll be in the same building.
In my submission, that's the least worst solution in the sense that the one that fits most readily within the legislation. Of course, it's not necessarily a less practical solution for this reason, that if it's accepted that the public law challenge, if there is one, must be heard in the administrative court, then it's not multiplying proceedings or causing further inconvenience to have the article eight proportionality challenge heard there. Of course, if your lord, if this court is of the view that it's possible without doing violence to the legislation for it all to be heard in the county court, then claiming the practical implications of that are good. The concern the Secretary of State has is the one I've outlined, that that does go behind the legislation.
So I'm still just, I'm not sure I've quite understood. This, you referred to the article eight proportionality, this is, I think, your long stop and so on. Now, yesterday, I thought that you were saying that that was something which the court, which made the order, the actual possession order, would have to consider.
Ordinarily, yes. Not in this case.
So not in this case, so it goes to the, it goes to the administrative court, is that right?
Yes, my lord.
And what does it do?
The administrative court...
What kind of proceedings are these that it's going to visit? What is it?
Well, they may be one of two kinds, or both, a traditional judicial review type hearing.
Or?
Or, and/or, exactly the same kind of long stop article eight review that would have otherwise taken place in the court of, at the county court.
Why does it go there? I mean, what is it, why does it go there?
It goes there because section one four three D two prevents it going in the county court.
Or prevents it going to the possession proceedings?
Yes.
Wherever those may be. But what's the relief?
Exactly what I was about to ask. I mean, what happens? Supposing, supposing that the administrative court finds that it is disproportionate, what does it do?
Well, I think the answer to that is it could quash the review decision so that then there would be no basis for making the possession order, and further make a declaration that it would be disproportionate.
It would, it would go back, even though it would, it might do, I mean, you say it might set aside the application, the decision to take the proceedings, is that right?
Well, I think formally, it would be the review that would be quashed, and then there would be no basis for making the possession order.
Isn't that in effect reading into one four three E two B a proportionality requirement?
One four three?
E two B.
No, because if it's, if it's a public law challenge, then it could be a challenge that the reasons were irrational, for example. That would be, and that's been recognised since Cochrane, that that kind of challenge could be brought. If it's an article eight long stop challenge, then it's not reading that in at all. It's simply, as I outlined yesterday, undertaking a final, a final analysis of whether, in all the circumstances when it comes to hear the case, would the measure be disproportionate? And that's not, not reading anything into the statute at all in my submission.
But after the first such case, wouldn't the authority have to give reasons about proportionality in its notice?
No, my lord, and that indeed takes me to my next point, which is what reasons may the local authority put forward? I'll move to that if I may, because we say unlike the provisions in relation to secure tenancies and provisions relating to the determination of, sorry, relating to the creation of a demoted tenancy, provide no restrictive class of reasons which must be made out in order for an order of possession to be made. And in that regard, I rely again on McClellan, if I could invite the court to take that up, at paragraph ninety-seven.
This is volume eight again, is it?
This is volume eight, tab seventy-seven.
Paragraph ninety-seven.
Paragraph ninety-seven, Lord Justice Waller examines the way the introductory tenancy scheme, it was in that case, is supposed to work. And he says in the second sentence, "If the council in providing reasons alleges acts constituting nuisance, and if the allegations themselves are disputed, that at first sight seems to raise a suit of facts." But under the introductory tenancy scheme, it's not a requirement that the council should be satisfied that breaches of the tenancy agreement have in fact taken place. The right question under the scheme will be whether, in the context of allegation and counter allegation, it was reasonable for the council to take a decision to proceed with termination of the introductory tenancy. That is again a matter which can be dealt with under judicial review, either of the traditional kind, or if it's necessary to do so intensified so as to ensure that the tenant's rights are protected.
Does he mean reasonable in the Weddensbury sense?
He does, then.
Or in the heightened Weddensbury sense, perhaps?
Well, I think first in the Weddensbury sense and then in the heightened Weddensbury sense. Now, much water's flown under the bridge in that respect with Kay and Doherty and so forth, in terms of what public law challenge is being approached. But what we submit one gets from that is that there is no requirement under the scheme of the legislation for the local authority to make out particular breaches or have a narrowly defined class of reasons. All that's requirement is it reaches a judgment which is lawful in public law terms as to whether the tenancy should be terminated or not. And we submitted it's striking that whereas a local authority must make out specified grounds when demoting a tenancy, there is absolutely nothing in the legislation to specify what grounds must be made out when terminating a demoted tenancy.
And that's entirely consistent with the notion that if the tenant wants to raise an article eight point, it's up to him to raise it, it's not up to the local authority to... It just seems to me that if one looks at the sort of scheme you're proposing, it's highly unsatisfactory from the court's point of view, from the landlord's point of view, from the tenant's point of view. The landlord's got to start two sets of proceedings, the tenant turns up in the county court and is told, "Sorry, you've taken a day off work, but you want to raise this point, you've got to go off the administrative court." The landlord's got to incur two lots, the parties have to incur two lots of fees, two lots of hearings, it takes up court time. I mean, this is, it's something that gives human rights a bad name.
The county court's still got to decide whether it's going to adjourn it or not, which means it's got to look at it.
Well, it's got to look at the arguability.
Yes.
In that sense.
Exactly.
John Knox's point is that, if you have an administrative court judicial review, that won't actually provide a defence to the possession proceedings. And if the administrative court concludes that there's something irregular about the decision-making process, it can, at least in certain contexts, order a fresh review, while the possession proceedings will have been brought in time. So there's no question of the demoted tenancy being restored to being a pure tenancy. So I mean, there is that substantive point about, which he relies on, as is the third of his three points.
Well, and that's a point that Stanley Burnton relied on below as well, as being a substantive reason why the powers of the administrative court do avoid a scenario in which a secure tenancy is regained, even though it's a public law challenge which could be dealt with by way of an order to reconsider on the review.
What if there hasn't been a review at all? What if there hasn't been a review at all? How does your analysis work?
Well, if there hasn't been a review at all, then the county court must refuse possession. Oh, sorry, if he hasn't asked for one.
Yeah, yeah, but maybe when the, you know, push comes to shove, and there actually is, there he is in the county court, he realises he's in danger of being kicked out tomorrow, he says, "Oh, but that's completely disproportionate for the following very good reasons." How does your analysis work? Surely the county court then thinks, "Well, is there an arguable proportionality possibility here? If there is, I send it off to the admin court." And the admin court is then reviewing, not the review, not the local authority review, but the local authority decision to serve the notice.
That would have to be right.
Yes.
The final point on the construction of the Act is just as to whether only matters which may be taken into account by the review may then, sorry, only matters which are in the notice may be taken into account on review. We again refer to the fact that there is nothing under the scheme of the nineteen ninety-six Act limiting the matters which may be taken into account on review, and so submit with the respondents that, as in this case, both the occupier and the local authority may present additional evidence of more recent matters at the review stage, and that Lord Justice Stanley Burnton correctly reached that view at paragraph sixty-one of judgment below.
Paragraph fifty-one?
Sixty-one, my lord. And I say no more about that because I want to move in the time that remains available for me to the important and difficult question of the application of section six two B of the Human Rights Act, which is the one substantive submission that remains for me to deal with.
Do you have to take account of what six two A provides in understanding what six two B is all about?
Certainly, my lord, and we'll go there in a moment. The majority of the House of Lords in Doherty found that section six two B of the Human Rights Act would operate to provide defence to a local authority seeking possession in cases of gypsies on local authority traveller sites, even if in doing so, they were acting in breach of article eight. And we submit that such an approach gives section six two B too wide an ambit, and if followed, would deprive the Human Rights Act substantially of the protection it gives to human rights in the domestic context. And taking my lead from Lord Hope, I would invite... And taking my lead from Lord Hope, I would invite the court to go directly to the Human Rights Act to look at this. That's in volume two, tab eleven. And if we could start not with section six, but with section three. In my submission, these provisions need to be read together. Although section three is headed interpretation of legislation, subsection three-one states, "In so far as it is possible to do so, primary legislation and subordinate legislation must be read and given effect in a way which is compatible with the convention rights." And we emphasise the words "and given effect" which render this provision in fact wider than a mere interpretive provision, but also provision which tells us something about the way in which public authorities should exercise their powers under legislation. And section six, as we will see, follows that language and goes on to section six. Section six-one says, "It's unlawful for a public authority to act in a way which is incompatible with the convention right." Subsection two says, "Subsection one does not apply to enact if as a result of one or more provisions of primary legislation, the authority could not have acted differently or B, in the case of one or more provisions of or made under primary legislation which cannot be read or given effect in a way which is compatible with convention rights, the authority was acting so as to give effect to enforce or to enforce those rights." And we submit therefore that that means that section six-one won't apply if the public body is giving effect to a provision of or made under primary legislation which cannot either be read or given effect to in a manner compatible with the convention. And that's an important disjunction. Section six-two A then is concerned with duties or prohibitions. Section six-two B is concerned with statutory powers. The purpose of section six-two is to preserve the sovereignty of Parliament, or to put it another way, to prevent the will of Parliament being subverted. But the mere fact that a statutory power is capable of being exercised in a manner incompatible with convention rights doesn't entail that it's incapable of being given effect to in a manner consistent with convention rights. And so we submit not every statutory power will attract the protection of section six-two B, and indeed if it did, the Human Rights Act would be almost entirely self-defeating. The key question and the difficult question is this: when will limiting the ability of a public body to exercise a statutory power amount to a subversion of the will of Parliament? And with that in mind, we put forward the following test. Does the relevant statutory power require, sorry, does the relevant statutory test require or require by necessary implication that convention rights be breached?
The what?
That convention rights be breached in the manner of which complaint is made.
You started that by saying, "Does the relevant test require?" That was a mistake, wasn't it?
Does the relevant statutory power require?
Right, thank you.
It's set out more or less in these terms at paragraph ninety of our case, but I spell it out in this way for emphasis. That we say is the test...
Can you just repeat it?
Sorry, milady. Does the relevant statutory power require or require by necessary implication that convention rights be breached in the manner of which complaint is made in the particular case?
Exactly, word for word, the way it's put in paragraph ninety.
Well...
Except it's put in the plot.
Can you explain at some point, if I catch you, what the difference is between that and what the effect is of section six-two A?
Section six-two A is not concerned with statutory powers at all. Section six-two A is concerned with statutory duties or statutory prohibitions. Where a public body is under a duty to act in a particular way or is prohibited by statute from acting in a particular way, and that involves a convention right being breached.
What is the difference between a duty to do something under A and what is covered by B?
What is, because what is covered by B is a case where one has a power or a discretion, so it's not a duty, but that the nature of that power or duty is such that Parliament must have intended expressly or impliedly that the local authority should be able to exercise it in a manner which breaches convention rights.
Yes, well, in the light of that answer, wouldn't your formulation be better if it said, "Does the relevant statutory power permit"
Yeah.
"or permit by necessary implication that convention rights be breached?"
No, we don't put that as like that for the reason that I'll come to in a moment. If I could turn first, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
If I could turn to the ex parte Sims decision, which we submit this test can be derived from.
Just before we, you say duty, power, and certainly all the textbooks seem to read it, but Parliament has, I guess, very deliberately, because the parliamentary draftsman must have really agonised, every word of this, has not used duty or power or discretion. It's, I mean, we do have to look at two A and two B quite quite carefully, don't we, to see whether that shorthand way of putting it really does stand up.
Well, I accept that and one could equally substitute the word statutory provisions for statutory power in the formula that I've put forward, but...
Sorry, if I just put one more thought and then I'll keep quiet, but I do wonder why in six-two A Parliament has not made any reference to the possibility of subordinate legislation, because the words "or made under" don't appear, and why the words cannot be written, read or given effect to, which I think you say echo section three, occur in B and not in A? Because I can't see at the moment that there's any difference between a duty and a power which would make it appropriate to have the words in one and not in the other.
Yeah. Well, sorry. Yes, I mean, it's pointed out to me that in the case of section six-two A, the primary legislation in question would always have to be subject to the the section three interpretive duty. But it may be that the answer lies in perhaps a more colloquial way in which I would put the difference between A and B, is that A is concerned where situations where the local authority, the public authority simply has no choice at all as how to act. And that will be in general by virtue of a duty or a prohibition, because those are the circumstances in which a public authority has no choice.
Well, yes, but it might be quite unrelated to the convention duty, so that the legislation on its face couldn't be said to be compatible. Supposing you had a cap on local authority expenditure of so much per annum and it simply ran out of money, couldn't do anything more, couldn't perform any of its duties, let alone its Human Rights Act duties, then as a result of the cap, it couldn't act.
Yes.
That would have, you wouldn't say the legislation was incompatible of itself, which is what B is dealing with, isn't it?
Um, well, no, I say...
The legislation is, can't be read compatibly.
Well, if in the result it was causing breaches of human rights, then this would be in play. But the way I would distinguish between them is that section six-two A is dealing with, as I say, the situation where the public authority could not have acted differently. Section sixty-B is concerned with circumstances where the local authority has a range of ways in which it could act. But if it's deprived of the ability to act in a manner incompatibly with the convention, Parliament's will in giving it that power is being defeated. So it's preserving the sovereignty of Parliament in circumstances where there are a range of ways in which the public authority could act. And as I say, we see that from ex parte Sims.
Before you go there, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is it possible to get some indication of what B is all about by looking at the words "was acting so as to give effect"? That suggests there is an element of choice. It can see what the provisions are. It's not, it's not bound to give effect to the more foursome, but it's chosen to do so.
Yes.
But is there any more in it than that? I mean, I don't see the kind of choice that you're suggesting, which seems to be the manner of the exercise and rather simply whether or not to give effect or to enforce. It looks at the element of choice at that level rather than penetrating into the different ways in which one might give effect or enforce.
Well, I accept that, although, and indeed if one takes a case such as Hooper, that is an example of section six-two B applying where the relevant statute in play was a duty rather than a power. The power in that case was a common law power, so it may be that it just operates at that level as to are there a range of ways in which a local authority can act? It's not necessarily that it is a dichotomy between duties and prohibitions under A and powers under B, but I do submit that in general, that is what the scheme is aimed at. If we go to Sims at Authorities' Volume Seven, tab sixty-four. This is a pre-human rights case on the limitation on prisoners talking to journalists. Its specific context is not centrally important, but if we could look at Lord Kaufman's speech at page one-three-one, my submission, his analysis is, at one-three-one, letter E, "Parliamentary sovereignty means that Parliament can, if it chooses, legislate contrary to fundamental principles of human rights. The Human Rights Act will not detract from this power. The constraints upon its exercise by Parliament are ultimately political, not legal. But the principle of legality means that Parliament must squarely confront what it's doing and accept the political cost. Fundamental rights cannot be overridden by general or ambiguous words. This is because there is too great a risk that the full implications of their unqualified meaning may have passed unnoticed in the democratic process. In the absence of express language or necessary implication to the contrary, the courts therefore presume that even the most general words were intended to be subject to the basic rights of the individual." And we stress those words. "In this way, the Courts of the United Kingdom, through acknowledging the sovereignty of Parliament, apply principles of constitutionality little different from those which exist in countries where the power of the legislature is expressly limited by constitutional doctrine. The Human Rights Act will make three changes to the scheme of things. First, the principles of fundamental rights which exist at common law will be supplemented by a specific text. Much of this is already the common law, that's why the UK government felt able to exceed the convention, so the adoption of this bill is unlikely to involve radical change. Secondly, the principle of legality will be expressly enacted as a rule of construction in section three, will gain further support from the obligations of a minister in charge of bills to make a statement of compatibility. Thirdly, in those unusual cases in which a legislative infringement of fundamental human rights is so clearly expressed as not to yield to the principle of legality, the courts will be able to draw this to the attention of Parliament by making a declaration of incompatibility." And we submit that that analysis can be applied in the context of section six-two, unless the scheme enacted by Parliament must have been intended to operate in such a way as to breach convention rights. We submit that section six-two B will not apply. And with that in mind, we turn to the relevant power which is at play in the present case, which in our submission is section twenty-one of the Human Rights Act nineteen, sorry, the Housing Act nineteen eighty-five, which is in the supplement to the Authorities' bundle, which the court should have separately. I apologise, it's not there, it's in fact in volume, volume one, tab seven, I apologise.
Tab seven.
Volume one, tab seven. Section twenty-one of the Housing Act eighty-five, read.
Volume one, tab seven.
Volume one, tab seven, milord. "The general management regulation and control of the local housing authorities' houses is vested in and shall be exercised by the authority, and the houses shall at all times be open to inspection by the authority." Now, that is the general management power pursuant to which local authorities take decisions as to whether to seek possession in particular cases and so forth. It's referred to by my lord, Lord Walker, as the relevant general power in the Doherty case. And we ask rhetorically, looking at section twenty-one, can that provision be read or given effect to in a manner which is compatible with convention rights? To which we submit the clear and obvious answer is, of course it can. Housing authorities throughout the country exercise that power on thousands of occasions every day in manners which are entirely compatible with convention rights. Indeed, that's what one would expect, given that local authorities should always act compatibly with human rights if they can, as my lord, Lord Walker, pointed out in Doherty at paragraphs one-hundred-and-nine and one-hundred-and-twenty-one. And the mere fact that it would be possible to exercise this general power in a manner which infringed convention rights, in my submission, doesn't begin to bring section six-two B into play.
So it's trapped by section six-one, in effect?
Yes.
In that situation.
And that's why we would respectfully not propose the formulation of, "Does the section permit the local authority to breach convention rights?" The better formula in our submission is, "Does it require or impliedly require?"
Well, if you ask the question, "permit", the answer would be, "No, it doesn't", because there's an implicit restriction on the scope of the section.
Well, certainly if one puts it that way, then I'd entirely accept the way my lord puts it to me, but we say...
Isn't that really what one's asking oneself? Can one sensibly read into the express provision in brackets, provided it doesn't infringe human rights?
Yes.
And if reading that in would make a complete nonsense of the provision, then you can't.
Yes. And I would entirely accept that. And we say, looking at this provision, one plainly can, it makes no nonsense of it at all.
But you've chosen an easy example.
Well, the example in this case.
It's the one in this case, isn't it?
Of B, I mean, you see, I mean, they don't, simply don't bite at all on that approach. The opening words of B, sub-paragraph B, simply don't apply because this isn't a provision which can't be read or given effect in a way that is compatible.
No.
So it's always...
But equally, we submit that in the Doherty case, which I will come to, the same point applies.
I mean, Mr Stewart, it's, the effect of this surely is that there will never be a problem, six-two B will never avail the public authority, except in a case where this discretionary power can never be exercised compatibly or would always have to be exercised in order for it to be compatible.
Well, no, I wouldn't go quite that far. I'd say that it all in circumstances where... I'd say that, or in circumstances where it's sufficiently clear that Parliament's intention was that it would sometimes be exercised in a manner incompatible with the convention. I submit that will be a very rare case.
Here was an example of.
Well, very difficult to think of. The kind of example that comes to mind, for example, is the cancel case, where there was the power of the Home Secretary to disregard the judge's recommendation for a life sentence. Now, the Secretary of State has been given that power. The difficulty there was that it was held to be incompatible with Article Six, but it must have been intended in giving that power that he would have the opportunity to do so.
But that's the example of my lord's point.
My submission is very difficult to think of an example that would come within this.
Well, I think there's a, I mean, I think one gets a hint of one from the, I've forgotten exactly which section, it's fifty-seven two or something, the Scotland Act, which has a specific thing dealing with the position of the Lord Advocate. Because you can envisage, for example, having a crime on the statute book made by primary legislation which is incompatible with convention.
Yes.
But nonetheless, and there the Lord Advocate or the prosecutor wishes to prosecute the crime, and he is allowed to do that by virtue of this, because if he does do that, it will inevitably involve some breach of the thing. Now, it can't be the case that he must simply decline to prosecute.
Yes.
And so that, I think, is an example.
That would be an example. And the further example, and they are unusual ones, and my submission is Hooper, and Hooper was a common law power, but in Hooper, what you had was a duty to pay certain payments to widowers, and that was an absolute, an absolute example, sorry, an absolute duty. And what was said was that the Secretary of State should exercise a discretion to make a common law payment to widowers who were excluded from the legislation. And that was a discretion that was entirely open. What was held was that it would be subverting the will of Parliament in enacting that discriminatory legislation for the Secretary of State to exercise his discretion at common law, to make equivalent payments to widowers, to those made to widows. Now, that's an example of where it would simply be contrary to the clear intention of Parliament to exercise a wide discretion in such a way that undermined the scheme, which perhaps comes closest to an example of the third kind that I indicated. I mean, a further example that's mentioned to me by Mr Hooper would be one of a particular power, and this is perhaps close to my Lord Roger's example, a particular power to admit evidence in criminal proceedings, which it was argued in some, generally would be incompatible with the criminal provisions of Article Six of the convention, even if it couldn't be said that in every single case it would be a breach of Article Six for that evidence to be admitted.
Well, we had an example, some of us not so very long ago, in a Scottish case, which is awaiting judgment, where on one reading of the primary legislation, a statement made by a suspect who's in police custody, who doesn't have the benefit of legal advice, could be admitted in evidence. Now, let's assume that it was held that the fact that he was interrogated without legal advice was a breach of Article Six. Nevertheless, the statute, let's assume, permits that evidence to be led. That might be an example of something where the primary legislation, because it simply, that's what it provides, in effect, that that can be done. The prosecutor is acting in a way that is giving effect to what the legislation provides.
Yes.
Is that not, would that not fall within B?
That would be another example, even if it couldn't be said that in every single case it would be a breach of the convention.
Well, it's always going to be, the assumption is, it's always going to be a breach of the convention because of the way the evidence was obtained in the first place. There is a choice, do I lead the evidence or do I not?
Yes.
And the choice is exercised in favour of leading the evidence.
Well, that would certainly fall with section six two B, yes, my lord.
If the county court didn't have power to adjourn, would you say then it's applied to one four three D two?
One four three Ds.
On our analysis, if I'm right about our interpretation of section one four three D two, and there was no power to adjourn and no power to hear a proportionality case, that would probably fall within section six one A.
Right, yes. Yes, I think that must be right, yes.
I mean, what you would say is that section six two A applies to the court in the possession proceedings, subject to.
Subject to the arguments about having a house.
About a German and so on.
And proportionality to be held.
And section six two B does not apply to the choices made by the local authority in bringing the proceedings and serving the notices and so on.
Yes. And if we.
And you would say six two A applies to the court in a private landlord claim?
Yes, my lord. Yes, although, as I'm reminded, our first submission on that is that Article Eight wouldn't be in play at all, our primary submission, but also.
No, but even if it were in play, the county court has no option to do anything, but where the private landlord under domestic laws entitled to possession, no person of proportionality arises, he's got to make the order.
But where's the primary legislation involved in that?
If there is primary legislation, yes.
But there may not be any primary legislation. He may simply be relying on his common law rights.
Yes. Well, that then, if convention rights are in play, that then raises difficult questions as to whether the common law, if it's the common law that's in play ought to be developed by the courts in such a way as to be convention compatible, but that's a very different argument to the one that we're having today.
But it rather belches your argument that Article Eight isn't in play at all, yes.
Lord Newberry referred earlier to mortgagee's sums for possession, which is an interesting one, because although banks and building societies are no doubt in the private sector, an awful lot of the public regard them as really being part of the public sector, who knows Northern Rock and Royal Bank of Scotland. But, and there, I think, if you go back to the early nineteen sixties, courts had begun to just to take on themselves a power to grant long adjournments because they felt sorry for the mortgageors.
Yes.
And they thought that the building societies were being a bit tough. But then that was challenged, and it was held that there was no such power, and it was then covered by legislation, which is now drawn in quite precise terms.
Yes. Well, I mean, that would be an example of, I suppose, what the county court might be being invited to do in the private case by a claimant, or indeed the High Court in the breach of contract example that I gave. In my submission, where one's dealing with private parties in that way, the route in terms of fetters is appropriately the legislative one, as was, my lord tells me, done in the case of mortgagees. Before finishing on the section six two B point, because I'm.
I suppose in private landlord possession proceedings, there is that, I think, Housing Act provision saying, which we referred to earlier, saying the court can't give more than six weeks.
Yeah, section eighty-nine.
And therefore, that would enable the court to say, there's no alternative.
Yes.
We can't give you a long time because you're very ill, I'm sorry. Parliament has tied my hand.
Just finally, on section six two B, just to go back to what was said about it in K and Doherty, in neither of those cases, we submit, was their full argument on the point. Indeed, in K, there was no argument at all on section six two B. It's referred to only in Lord Hope's speech in passing, really, at paragraphs eighty-six and one one four, and none of the minority considered section six two B. Although Lady Hale and Lord Brown concurred in paragraph one hundred and ten of Lord Hope's speech, neither of them concurred specifically with the passages in relation to section six two B. And so we say, really, that doesn't bind, not that it would bind anyway, but that's not positive authority on the point. As to Doherty itself, there wasn't full argument in Doherty on this point either.
Felt pretty full. Felt pretty full.
I think we had Mr Sales.
Well, just to summarise the history, it was mentioned only very briefly once in section six, in the respondent's case. The respondent, then, after Mr Sales had made his submissions, as the intervenor, put section six two at the forefront of their oral argument, as a result of which, Mr Sales was exceptionally given an opportunity to reply on that point. One sees that, in fact, from the judgment, or the record of the argument, volume four, tab thirty-three. It's page eight, three eight six. One sees, just below better B, the argument records Sales to see in reply on section six two B of the nineteen ninety-eight Act, and Lord Mount comments on those submissions at paragraph one four one, in the speeches at page four four four, four lines down. "Section six two was mentioned only briefly and very generally in the parties' written cases, and it was only after Mr Ashley Underwood for the council had indicated the nature of the council's reliance in section six two during the morning of the second and last hearing day, that Mr Luba and Mr Sales asked the House after the midday adjournment to permission for Mr Sales to make further submissions specifically directed to it. Mr Sales' submissions, made with the benefit of the midday adjournment, were well focused, but in the circumstances brief." And that's why I submit there wasn't a full argument.
There wasn't any reference to, as I pointed down a little there down, to Wilkinson or to Hooper?
No.
Which were only discovered while we were working on the case.
Yes. Well, see, it wasn't anticipated that that would be an argument raised or developed in the case, and that's why it was dealt with in that perhaps slightly unsatisfactory way. But in the event, we submit that there wasn't a full analysis of the meaning of section six two B in terms of whether it will apply to a general power, just because a general power may be exercised and is wide enough to allow a convention right.
So we're looking at Doherty just to see if the point wasn't made?
Well, no, because then I was going to take, your lordship, very briefly and finally, before I sit down, to the way it was approached by Lord Walker, how he would have regarded it subject to being bound by K, and we see that at paragraphs one one three and one one four. And at one one four in particular, Lord Walker says halfway down, but for Hooper and K, I would have supposed that section six two B does not apply to a case where a housing authority has had a power to start proceedings aimed at a summary order for possession but could lawfully have decided to take a different course. And we say K isn't authority on this point at all, and all Hooper decides is that a common law power can't be exercised in a manner which is incompatible with Parliament's clear intention in providing a duty. And then finally, we rely, as did Mr Drabble, on my Lord Mount's speech, which is, the relevant paragraphs begin at paragraph one four one, we've already looked at, and it's pointed out at one four two that K is not binding authority. And then at one five three, Lord Mount says, as for section six two B, it's the court's duty under section three one of the nineteen ninety-eight Act to read effect and give effect to the statutory scheme so far as is possible in a way which is compatible with convention rights. And then going down about eight lines, "The exclusion relating to local authorities say nothing about such authorities' performance of their general public law duties, in particular nothing to contradict or undermine the duty to act compatibly with the Human Rights Convention obligations. Once the nineteen ninety-eight Act came into force, it's possible to read and give effect to the statutory scheme of both the nineteen sixty-eight Act and the nineteen eighty-three Act in a way which entitles a local authority when deciding whether or not to give any, and if so, what length notice to a carrefound site occupied by travellers, travellers terminating their right to occupy, to take into account the convention rights, including the length of time for which the site has been occupied as the occupier's home. Whether and to what extent this will be relevant will depend on the circumstances. Accordingly, a local authority which fails to take into account convention values when deciding whether or not to give any, and if so, what length of notice, cannot, in my opinion, be said to be acting so as to give effect or to enforce statute provisions which are incompatible with the convention rights." And then finally, we see at paragraph one five eight, ten lines down, there's reference to K and Cazi. Even in these situations, it doesn't seem to me that the decision to pursue county court proceedings to enforce a right of possession preserved by a statutory scheme can properly be described as action to give effect to or enforce section six two B any statutory provisions which may be regarded as incompatible with the convention rights. The statutory scheme commits a decision which says nothing about what sort of decision or when. In deciding when and how to act, the council is giving effect to its own evaluation of what's appropriate, is entitled and bound to do so. If it fails properly to respect convention values, it's not, in my opinion, acting so as to give effect to or enforce statute provisions which are compatible with the convention. And we respectfully adopt that analysis. So those are our submissions on section six two B. On Article Six, given that it wasn't developed, I simply refer the court to paragraphs one hundred and two to one hundred and nine of our case. And subject then to any further questions that the court may have, those are submissions on behalf of the Secretary of State.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, my lord.
My lords and ladies, the Equality and Human Rights Commission is very grateful to the court to have this opportunity to make these very short submissions. The submissions I should be making in the course of this brief interlude this afternoon are designed to invite this court to do two things. Firstly, to remedy the divergence which has opened between the jurisprudence of the United Kingdom courts and the Strasbourg courts on the application of the convention to housing possession claims. And secondly, to ask this court to identify a workable legal framework in which public authority landlords and the domestic courts can best ensure that possession orders are sought and granted only in convention compliant circumstances. I wish to make it clear briefly that the Commission's stance is not a pro-occupier stance in this context. The Commission's concern is with the human rights of all of those in the United Kingdom, including the human rights of those who are sometimes the victims of the activities of occupiers who face possession claims, and those persons who have a greater human right to avenge social housing than those who presently occupy. Nevertheless, in the instant context of housing possession claims, the Commission's intervention is motivated by a desire to see the nineteen ninety-eight Human Rights Act, which it has a statutory function of reviewing, explaining and promoting, construed in a manner which does provide effective protection in the domestic courts. Most directly, the Commission's concern is that there should not, in the courts of this country, be the granting of an order for possession in circumstances which the Strasbourg court would now hold to be in violation of the convention. Therefore, and this is the last of my introductory observations, in common cause, certainly with the Secretary of State and the opponent, we ask this court now to construe Article Eight consistently with the modern case law of the Strasbourg Court and hold that, given the seriousness of the interference with respect for a home that eviction involves. respect for a home that eviction involves, what is required in each case in which a public authority seeks possession and the issue is raised, that a court is satisfied that the making of an order for possession and the terms of that order are proportionate to the legitimate aim pursued. We extend that invitation to this court because any doubt that the Strasbourg Court might modify or abandon its approach is, in our submission, removed by the recent framing of the question posed to the parties in K and the United Kingdom. We've set that out in paragraph twenty-four of our printed case and we've given your lordships a tab E eight of the additional bundle, the full draft of the factual statement drawn by the Strasbourg Court and the question.
Could I be sure that I found that? Is this in, you say E eight of the additional?
No, my lord, there is a, there is from the commission, an entirely separate additional bundle in the traditional green binding, and it has been called additional bundle A.
Yes, I find it, yes.
On the spine.
This is just an ordinary chamber of the court.
It's a ordinary chamber of the court, indeed it is, my lord. There is, as my lords were told this morning by Mr Stillett, no likelihood of any case in the Grand Chamber, certainly not one concerned with the United Kingdom, in the light of the observation my lady, Lady Hale made about the attitude of the Secretary of State chaired by, who's on the Court of Chamber. My lord will see the list behind, will not see, I'm afraid, the list behind tab E eight. The chamber is not identified as Court's membership here. My lord, my lady, my Lord Lord Phillips asked my learned friends yesterday when it is likely that the Strasbourg Court would deliver its decision in K and the United Kingdom. That, of course, is a matter to which the commission have inquired through the solicitors for the applicant in that case, and the answer has come back that it's not possible to provide a progress report for the above case in the light of the caseload of the commission, of the court. So I'm afraid, my lord, there's absolutely no indication when that division of the court will get round to determining the case in K. In those circumstances, my lord and my lady, since I have something in the region of twenty minutes left, what I have done is reduced to writing three propositions which we seek to make good in the course of our short oral submissions today. And if I may, I'll pass them up to the members of the court and distribute them among council. And that will save, I hope, the court having to take a note of the submissions and propositions I shall advance.
Well, I think they've been given to a note.
My lords and my lady will have seen whilst that's being distributed, that we've put in a printed case, which I hope has indicated that the submission of the commission is that the modern approach of the Strasbourg Court can be accommodated within the United Kingdom's arrangements for social housing provision and within our complex structure of social housing legislation. In other words, we seek to show that it can fit. Lords and my lady, that is therefore the formulation of the first of our propositions, that the modern Strasbourg approach can be accommodated in the domestic jurisdiction in a housing possession case precisely because both the claimant public authority that seeks possession and the domestic court hearing claim must act in a manner which avoids infringement of the occupier's right under article eight. And that is facilitated by the very structure of the Human Rights Act nineteen ninety-eight. It is the commission's submission to your lordships, my lady's court, that the Human Rights Act nineteen ninety-eight provides precisely the vehicle which enables this to happen. My lords and my lady, as with that material and all the other authorities which the court has already been shown, I shall not have the opportunity to go back to the primary materials. But the commission's case is that section six one of the Human Rights Act nineteen ninety-eight, in rendering transgression of the convention rights unlawful by a public authority, provides the necessary avenue or conduit through which these matters can be addressed. We say that this, in our proposition, that both the claimant authority and the court are put in the frame in this respect by section six one, and that is made clearly, say, by the inclusion specifically and expressly of a court as a public authority in section six three. It is section seven one B of the Act that enables the occupier to rely on his convention rights in any legal proceedings, including, we say, proceedings for possession. And it follows the structure of section six and seven of the Human Rights Act, allows a defendant occupier to raise three matters. First, he may say that what the claimant public authority has done is unlawful, done to him already. Secondly, that what the public authority proposes to do is unlawful. And thirdly, that if the court as a public authority acts in a particular way, in granting possession or in setting the time in which possession must be given, it may be acting unlawfully if it infringes his convention rights. It's for that reason, in our respectful submission, both Lords Bingham and Lords Stane, in the first of the trio of the cases, quasi, in paragraph six and twenty-eight respectively, introduced both the role of the local authority landlord and the court into the application of article eight to housing possession proceedings. But how then is the integration of the modern approach to article eight proportionality to be achieved across the broad range of housing cases, including those identified at paragraph ten of our printed case, whilst preserving the sovereignty of Parliament, to fix a legislative regime for social housing which includes cases in which occupiers are not to have security of tenure? My lords and my lady, in the course of four submissions which we put up under this first proposition, we seek to show how it can be done across all housing possession cases. Our first submission is that the issue of any potential infringement of convention rights is for the defendant to raise, but equally for the claimant to meet. Thanks to the intervention of my learned friend, Mr Argon, to whom I pay tribute, a paragraph in Powerage, paragraph forty-three, was corrected to make this clear. The obligation is on the occupant to raise the potential infringement, but upon the claimant rather than the court to address that contention. That modern statement of the position in Powerage, the last of the cases, that's tab one hundred and fifteen, at paragraph forty-three, finds an early and domestic formulation in Lord Bingham's speech in K at paragraph twenty-nine. To our first of our submissions in support of proposition one, we hazard there will be little objection, but we have a commission dimension to it, which I hope has emerged for the members of the court from our printed case. It is that in certain circumstances, there may be an obligation on the court for itself to raise the question of potential interference with the convention right. We put it in our printed case on the basis that there may be certain circumstances in which the court apprehends for itself, without the point being expressly raised, that a potential infringement may occur.
Do you have a paragraph?
What is it?
Paragraph number?
I'm sorry, my lord, we've used the word apprehend throughout, but paragraph six of our printed case is the starting point for that submission. My lords, if we can't get an obligation on the court to deal with the unrepresented disadvantaged litigant in that way, then we'll get it from the overriding objective in CPR one. But we do say that in certain circumstances, the facts presented to the court will cause the court of its own motion to raise the point, notwithstanding the way we frame submission right. Submission two, in the writing that we presented to the court, deals with the class of case in which the court cannot grant possession unless it's reasonable to do so, the secure or assured tenancy case. My lords and my lady, that class of case has been largely glossed over in previous consideration by their lordships' house of the housing possession context. In our submission, that is unfortunate, because the secure tenancy type of case involves the court exercising two judgments. First, is it reasonable to order possession, which is a sufficiently broad term to embrace proportionality? But there is always a second stage, and that is, if the answer to one is yes, it is reasonable, then what is the proportionate order to make? And that is at large for the county court in the tens of thousands of secured assured tenancy claims it deals with every year. That is all made clear by the judgments of Mr Justice Blackburn and Lord Justice Sedley in the Galahad case, which is behind E five of our additional materials bundle. The paragraphs for your lordships and my ladies' note are Mr Justice Blackburn at twenty-nine, thirty and thirty-six, and Lord Justice Sedley at forty-eight to fifty-one. Galahad is significant because it was the first case at which any appellate court had to consider the application of the Human Rights Act to housing possession cases, and it shows a deliberate interweaving of the proposition of proportionality into our domestic handling of housing possession cases. Our third submission in the handout put up to the court this morning, it deals with the situation of persons not covered by a statutory scheme, either in the sense that they're conferred with security of tenure or that they are subject to a mandatory requirement, statute requirement, for possession. We say that in that class of case, where ordinarily the claimant's claim will succeed, the presumption may well be in favor of making the order, and that will normally be proportionate. But even in that class of case, the issue will fall for determination by the court on the facts where it is raised. That is the thrust of the modern Strasbourg authorities, exactly what Lord Bingham envisaged in K, paragraphs thirty-five to thirty-seven. And it will cover most of the classes of case that we set out in our printed case at paragraph ten. How the determination is made may be thought to be the crucial question, and I'll come back to that when I deal with our proposition two. Our submission four touches on the present class of case. That is a case where the statutory scheme has addressed particular circumstances, demotion, introductory status or whatever, and usually requires or stipulates that the court will prima facie be obliged to order possession if a notice and so on is served. We say in relation to that that it is highly unlikely that any legislative provision would now be identified in our social housing scheme, which would have the effect of forcing a court not to entertain proportionality. If such a provision could be found, the court would be bound to declare it incompatible. But how then do you get proportionality into this class of case in a housing possession claim? The commission respectfully offers two answers. The first possibility is ensuring that proportionality can be captured through the interpretive approach under section three of the H R W to the statutory provision. If the court can, through the interpretive provision, embrace the proportionality issue, then it must so construe the statute to accommodate it. That the commission take to be Mr Drabble's approach by his proposed insertion of the word lawful into the relevant section that operates in his class of case. But a second possibility that arises even if the first is not available or is overtaken by events is that the proceedings in which the mandatory order is sought by the public authority must be properly and lawfully before the court. This enables the occupier to take the point that the claimant is acting unlawfully in bringing the proceedings, either in the sense of conventional public law illegality, or, and this is an important or, or in the sense that the public authority is acting unlawfully in breach of section six one. By either of those routes, the, rather by the latter of those routes, the court trying the possession claim will be enabled to examine whether it is proportionate to grant possession. My Lord Lord Hope, at paragraph thirty-four of Qazi indeed, in the first of the three cases, recognized and indeed stated that any procedure by which a public authority recovers possession must be compatible with the occupier's convention rights by dint of section six one. So if the defendant can apply the section six one proposition and his section seven one B defence, it must be applicable to any exercise of the power to seek possession. That that is the effect of section six was exactly what Lord Nichols explained in paragraph fifty-nine of K, and it will follow from my references thus far to the speeches of Lords Bingham and Lord Nichols, that the commission is inviting this court to accept that the minority in K were right. Indeed, even Lord Scott, who was in the majority in that case, recognized at paragraphs one hundred and sixty-nine to one hundred and seventy, a freestanding section six one attack on the land of claim for possession in that case. This is not new. With respect, however, the commission wholly descents from Mr Stillett's proposition that in this class of case, the occupier's assertion of unlawfulness on the part of the claimant, whether put in conventional public law terms, gateway B, or under section six, must go off for adjudication elsewhere other than in the possession court. We say that he's wrong for the following reasons. Firstly, that is expressly contrary to what section seven one B provides, that the occupier can raise the convention point in any proceedings. Secondly, it is wholly inconsistent with what Lord Nichols said in K, paragraph fifty-nine. And it is wholly inconsistent with the remittal to the possession court in Doherty. There was a unanimous remission in Doherty to the court, albeit it was the High Court in that case. That was a pure accident. The possession claim had only been elevated to High Court to facilitate a leapfrog to what was then the House of Lords. Quite apart from those reasons, the commission is, is concerned at the wholly deleterious practical effect that Mr Stillett's submissions involve.
Holy deleterious what?
Practical effect.
Sorry, yes, yes.
Yes, delay, two courts, massive expense, all the points that my Lord Lord Newburger was raising this morning. In Manchester, which Mr Stillett showed the court this morning, it is right that Sir John Knox felt constrained by the statutory regime to force an adjournment situation and a referral to the administrative court. He would have, as the passages of his speech at, between letters F and G, and as my Lord Lord Walker observed, the judgment of Lord Justice Judge, have preferred a different course. That is, to have enabled it all to be done in one place. They encouraged Parliament to consider whether that could be achieved. And in our submission, Parliament did so subsequently in section seven one B of the Human Rights Act nineteen ninety-eight. When that was introduced, it gave the court the facility to deal with it in the possession proceedings. There is a concern that even this second way of looking at the ability of the court to deal with a possession claim is difficult because it may focus attention on some prior step taken by the claimant, the giving of a notice, the serving of a notice to quit, and may not embrace the up-to-date circumstances, which is what the Strasbourg Court envisages in every case. But the Court of Appeal has found a workable answer to that in a trio of cases, Barber at our tab E four, McGlinn at E nine, and Mullin at tab eighty-five. And the workable device is to say that the public authority claimant seeking possession is under a continuing duty at all times up to the moment at which the court pronounces the possession order to review whether it is lawful to claim possession. In that way, we can, even in the class of case in which this court is presently concerned, ensure that proportionality can be vindicated. This is no new issue, as the reference by my Lord Lord Hope in both Qazi and K to the Law Commission's consultation paper made clear. The consultation paper is behind tab E two of our bundle of materials and set out the commission's view with some foresight that our system would have to yield to enable the proportionality or justification point to be taken even in mandatory cases. If I may, my lord, I've got about five minutes of my time left. I would like to take that after adjournment if I may, but may I make one last final point from the first of the propositions? I wish to deal, if I may, very briefly, with suggestions that were put by a number of your lordships yesterday in exchanges, that this modern Strasbourg approach, requiring a proportionality assessment in all cases, cuts across the social housing schemes of many members of the Council of Europe, in which no doubt many national legislative regimes have reserved an absolute right on the part of some public landowners to possession. The commission recognizes that the United Kingdom must face up to that. But we are not alone, as As my Lord, Lord Mans indicated this morning, this must be an issue across the other governments, that they must be considering what to do about it. The Commission has made some researches in this regard, and has identified that our nearest neighbour, nearest English-speaking neighbour, the Republic of Ireland, is itself working through, as this Court is working through, how to address this issue. The issue in the Irish Republic is even more stark, because there is an absolute mandatory requirement on the possession court in Ireland to issue a warrant for possession, provided notice is given by the public authority in the appropriate way. That has led to four cases in the Irish High Court which have sought to deal with the application of the modern McCann approach to that statutory environment. We've included three of them, one behind tab E6, and two behind E7. My Lords and my Ladies, we haven't got time to go to them in detail, but if your Lordships and my Ladies find time to read one, we would invite your attention to the last of them behind tab E7, which is the case of Pullet.
Case of what?
Pullet, P-U-double-L-E-N, my lord. In tab seven, we've included two of the High Court decisions from Ireland. First, immediately behind tab E7, we have the decision of Mr Justice O'Neill in the Galahad case. But I invite the Court to turn well through that bundle behind tab E7, to find the second much longer case, which starts after page 21 of Galahad.
This is Justice Mary Irvine.
Indeed, my Lord, Mrs, Liz or Miss Justice Irvine. The great advantage of inviting your Lordships to, if you wish to do so, look at her judgment, is that she had the advantage of the submissions of the Irish Human Rights Commission, as well as the Attorney General in that case. And my Lords, in my submission, and this will be my last point before adjournment, the Irish case is instructive, because it demonstrates how one might grapple with an incompatible mandatory requirement on the possession court to grant possession. But nevertheless, a Human Rights Act, much like our own, which makes it unlawful for public authorities to act contrary to the convention, the Irish Court declared in two of the four cases that the statutory provision was incompatible, because it was absolute. But what Mrs Justice Irvine has been able to do is to identify a different route to protect the occupier, and that is to hold that the claim of possession, utilising a procedure under which the Court must grant possession, is itself an infringement of convention rights if it's going to deprive the occupier of proportionality. And my Lords and my Ladies, we say that that approach by the Irish High Court in its most recent case chimes with the approach that should probably be taken in this case. The Court, therefore, is advised by the Commission to clear away the difficulties that K and Doherty posed for the application of the modern Strasbourg approach, and to do as the Irish have done. My Lords, there are two further propositions on my printed case. I don't seek, on my handed-up submissions, I don't seek to develop a second, but I would like to use my last five minutes, if I may, sorry, the third, like to use my last five minutes on submission two.
Very well, talk on.